This is the Monday, May 9, 2016, meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody else in the audience recording this meeting tonight? Being none, we raise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got several people here that have signed up for public comments, so I will start at the top, and Mr. Simontian.
All right, I'm gonna make this quick, because there is an agenda to get to. It's no secret, tonight's my last meeting, so I just wanted to take a few minutes under public comment to say goodbye, and if I can find my... I just want to quickly thank people in the town of Auburn for your support for the last six years. It's been a pleasure. I've said it many times, and it's...none of it's lost on me. Your time, your support, your phone calls, your emails, I have enjoyed every minute of it. A lot of people have asked me why I'm not staying. It's pretty simple. I believe in term limits. It's always been my philosophy. I don't believe elected positions should be lifetime appointments, and one thing you know about me, I've never been a hypocrite. I said six years going in. Tonight is the end of that six years. So, thank you for telling me you want me to stay, but that was a self-imposed term limit. I'd like to thank all the veterans who supported me for six years, my brothers and sisters. You guys have been phenomenal. Always a kind word, so many things that you've done to support me, so I definitely have to thank that group. My family, of course, who should have been first on the list, but they've done incredible things that most normal people don't want to do. Invested time that I'm sure they would have rather spent doing something else. Little kids who, you know, would have rather been out playing and doing a lot of other things, gave me that time and did that for me. Dad or no dad, my wife has just been a trooper through it all, and can't thank her enough for everything that she did. When I first got here six years ago, there were two people in particular who responded to my outreach for guidance, for kind of learning the ropes and trying to find my way on the Board of Selectmen, understanding how, you know, you can read all you want, but until you live it, you just don't know. I'd like to thank Tim Hicks for his support, for his guidance, for all of the help that he gave me. I'd like to thank Nick Hammond, who not only responded when I asked for help, but has become one of my best friends. There are very few people that I count among my friends who have been more loyal, who I've...to coin a phrase, "We've gone to war, we've hugged, we've talked, we've done a million things," and I wouldn't...I just can't imagine having someone by my side. The things he's done for me, immeasurable, the time, the piece of his life he's devoted to me, there's no words that can thank, say thank you. It pales in comparison of a simple thank you. Last of all, I will thank all of the people who have been my friends through this, new friends that I've received, that I didn't have going into this. It's been phenomenal. And finally, because I know none of the people responsible will do it, I will apologize to my daughters. I will apologize to you because as eight and nine-year-old girls, you had to read and hear things about me, lies that were made up about me, and I'm sorry to end on this note, but you deserve an apology and you're gonna get it from me. I am so proud of the three of you, holding your heads up, the things that were done, the things that were said, and not once did it ever get to you, and I couldn't be more proud of the adults that you're growing into. So, thank you all. Thank you for the support. Thank you for wonderful six years. I don't regret any of it. I've enjoyed it. I've given you everything I've had. There's a saying in sports, "Leave it on the field." I feel that for six years, I've left it all on the field. So, thank you all.
Okay, Mr. Wayne Page, have you come forward? I'm not quite sure what the topic is.
Good evening. Wayne Page, Steve Simontian leaving the board is the topic. I would like to say, over the years, past six years, arguments, good comments, good talks, never...we never always agreed on everything. We both had our own personal arguments about issues and stuff like that, but at least he, in my opinion, stood up for the people of the town. I think there were some board members that abused their authority against him. I think...I hope that we start getting new board members, because there's a few that not only abused him, but have...there has been one that has abused our own seniors in the town of Auburn. And the thing is, when somebody gets up there and does what Steve did, he did the hard talking that some of the board members didn't want to hear. I think they enticed him at times to get a little bit upset, which he did. And like I said, I always didn't agree with Steve Simontian, and he knows it, and fires everybody else goes they know it now, but the man's standing up to his word. He fought the hard fight. He served for the town of Auburn for six years. A lot of people that served for this town have been mistreated by certain people in this town, and we really, really...there's only a few of the board members. I'm not saying all the board members, but the thing is, is we really need to get this town back to the people. We don't need people doing things behind closed doors. We don't need people going after people behind their back, and I'm not gonna mention any names, because they know who they are. I don't even have to go there. And I just want to say, and not only that, but Mr. Simontian has been very good. Anytime I have dealt with veterans' issues, he's always been there. Not the rest of the board members, but Mr. Simontian was there every single time, or even called to ask if he could help. We don't see that on this board anymore. I don't know why. We need to get back to caring about the people. And that's it for me, and goodbye, Steve. Thank you.
You, Wayne. Much respect.
Okay, Mr. Bob Plutkus on the Wall of Honor. Bob Plutkus, 231 Milbury Street, town meeting member. A wall of honor is epitomized by the hard work and intelligence and very good arguments that Mr. Simontian has projected over the years and presented in different ways, and I hope that someday one of these walls will be a very...a wall of honor for every selectman who has served the town of Auburn. The sacrifices that their families make, that they as individuals make, deserves to be honored, and, you know, on a website certainly, but I would say on a wall physically in the building. Some of the things that I think Steve Simontian showed was that he was one of the most intelligent selectmen we've had, in my opinion. Certainly, I believe he falls into the category of a Rob Valentine, Dr. Bill Gribbins and others like them, and came up with a lot of new ideas. Some of you may not remember, but he was the first person who suggested and presented to the Wind Turbine Committee and Alternative Energy Committee the use of the landfill as a solar farm, that was then sent on to the Executive Secretary, Mr. O'Connor. Another thing that he was in favor of is when the Wind Turbine and Alternative Energy Committee entertained and had a presentation by the Green Communities Group. He supported that also, and that information and whole parts of the presentation was passed on to the Executive Secretary, Mr. O'Connor. I think he also has always supported the veterans, as Mr. Page has said. He's always been honest to me. He's never pulled punches. If he disagreed with me, he told me, and I respect that. And I think it's because of people like him that the town of Auburn is better, because we should have open and free discussions. That's what I'm in favor of, in all parts of our government, and we don't always have it. Free and open discussions, almost unlimited, so we can hear all the ideas, whether we like them or we don't like them. And I know that, because my grandparents came to this country in the 1880s for that very reason, and that's why I'm for it. As a veteran, I would like him on my flank in any battle, because I know he'll be there. He doesn't disappear on you when things get rough. I thank Mr. Simontian for service, and all selectmen, because the sacrifices you make have benefited this town and taken away from your families and your own personal lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, now I have...it's a little unlegible, so I don't know if it's Nick or Mike Hammond talking about Mr. Simontian. Welcome, Nick.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to come up here and thank Mr. Simontian for the kind words. I wasn't expecting that. It's Steve's last day, and I just wanted to say, it's very rare in politics these days, and even in life, to see somebody do something for all the right reasons. Steve ran for office for the right reasons. Most people do, but when they get there, they usually forget why they ran. A self-imposed term limit is a wonderful thing, and I would strongly suggest every board member consider it themselves, not because you can't serve more, but if you haven't gotten it done in six years, you're probably not gonna get it done. Let's be honest. And it's something to be said about walking away and letting somebody else come in with new, fresh ideas, letting somebody come in and do things that maybe you didn't agree with. From what I saw of Steve, serving with him and after his...Steve was the disinfectant to a lot of things, and the greatest disinfectant is sunlight. Steve was super, super focused on transparency, exposing things that he thought were wrong. Oftentimes, I didn't agree with him on what he thought was wrong. Oftentimes, I didn't agree with his approach, believe it or not, although some people would disagree. But Steve had a personality where he didn't care. He didn't care whether it hurt his vote totals next election. He didn't care whether people thought he was a jerk. He didn't care if 100 people in the room at 99 disagreed with him. He was still gonna speak his mind, because he felt that one person who did agree with him, they should have had a voice, and they should have been able to voice that opinion. Steve was often in the minority on this board in the political discourse. That's a great thing. I mean, that's a wonderful thing, and I think the town of Auburn has been getting away from political discourse in the interest of being nice, and there's a balance there. You know, there really is a balance there of just everybody go along to get along in political discourse. Sometimes Steve pushed the envelope, and I would tell him that you were not being nice and you didn't have to approach it that way, but sometimes several of you did too, and I'm guilty of that myself, being up there for a few years. So, I think we all could do better than that, but I would strongly, as Steve exits the board, I would strongly urge the board that they do not put the First Amendment, they do not put political discourse, they do not put democracy to the side for being nice and going along, getting along. You know, I'm not gonna say Steve did a good job, because Steve did his job, and I don't believe in patting people on the back for doing your job. You were elected to do a job, Steve. You did it. You represented the people, oftentimes the minority. You never made a decision based on votes, polls, or what other people thought. If every politician and every person who ran for office did what you did, would it be messy? Yep. Would feelings get hurt? Absolutely. Would everybody be represented? You're damn right. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Okay, just with my apologies, unfortunately, I have a prior commitment that I didn't want to miss the last meeting, my last meeting, but I unfortunately have to leave. I want to thank you all. I do appreciate it. It's been a pleasure. Good night. Goodbye. Take care. Good luck, Auburn.
Yeah, okay, can we just take a...I'm just gonna swap a chair with you, just so you're not moving around and...
My chair was sinking. It probably sunk. Thank you. Six inches since I sat in it. I thought it was gonna end up under here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pretty soon I was gonna disappear. We'll get back next.
All right. First on the agenda, we have proclamation for the National Letter Carriers Food Drive Day on May 14, 2016. Mr. LaFlash, would you care to come up to the table, please, and sit down with us?
Hello, everyone.
Welcome. Maybe you can give us a little bit of background that we've heard from year to year, but please let us all know what this is about tonight.
Well, the letter carriers have a national annual food drive. This is the 24th year that we've been doing it, and as of last year, the total collected throughout the entire country over the 24 years has been 1.4 billion pounds of food on a one-day food drive. Central Mass letter carriers are represented by Branch 12, which I'm a member of, and we represent 31 cities and towns, which Auburn is one of the cities and towns. We also have rural carriers in Central Mass, and they actually fully support it, and I get them the materials, the cards, and different things that you see to make sure that everybody gets notified of it. In Auburn, last year, we collected a little over 12,000 pounds of food on one day, which is a little lower than, you know, we've been up to like 16,000, 17,000. But 12,000 pounds of food for one day is pretty good. For our whole branch, we collected over 243,000 pounds for the one day. We bring all the food that's collected in Auburn. We give to food pantries right here in town, and I have a friend that helps me from the AFL-CIO, whose offices are out here, and even some of the food that we have from Worcester, we'll bring out here because we have a little residual that we try to get to all the different food pantries. This food feeds thousands of people throughout our community, and it's at a time of the year that's really needed. A lot of kids, when they're going to school, they get the breakfast and the lunch and stuff like that. Now they're getting out of school, and there's a lot of families that depend on this food at this time of year. You always hear about it at holidays, but hunger is a problem in our communities year long, and we take great pride as carriers to be able to do this for everybody. We're out there. We're delivering the mail. We see our customers, you know, and I mean, you don't say anything, but you know the ones that can use some help or you do whatever, and it just feels good to be able to give back to the community. It's a lot of work. We get a lot of help from a lot of volunteers, but at the end of the day, you go home and you feel good, because you know you've helped a lot of people. So, I'd like to thank you guys for recognizing what we do and giving us a chance to get the word out so that we can do a great job when it comes to this weekend, on Saturday, May 14.
Okay. Thank you.
Members, have any comments?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, you know, Norman, we've heard you on the radio recently, year after year, and you really have become the voice in the face of this effort, and, you know, as Was just said, sometimes term limits are good, but in a case like this, it's your advocacy that has, you know, raised a quick math of six tons of food. So, congratulations, and continue to be the voice, because people have so much respect for you and what you're doing, and you have the familiarity of this event, and I congratulate you.
I think that's why they chose me 18 years ago. They know I like to talk, so they figured maybe I'd be good at it, and it's easy to do, you know. I mean, you gotta get it out there, but I get excited when I know it's coming up, and I'm excited for this Saturday, because I know it's gonna be a great day, and it's my anniversary, so...
There you go. Happy anniversary. Well, it's definitely a worthwhile endeavor, and as you mentioned, it's not just for the holidays. It's every day, and you would have the ability to see exactly what's going on from day to day with all the letter carriers that are out there and just kind of pass the word along that there is some help needed out there, and we commend you and the Postal Service for continuing this program for all those who are a little bit less fortunate.
Thank you very much.
And what I'd like to do is I'd like to give you, pass along a proclamation, and it's from the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen. Whereas the Auburn Board of Selectmen wishes to acknowledge organizations whose members excel in service to the community, and whereas the National Association of Letter Carriers and its members demonstrate the highest level of civic responsibility, pride, and dedication, and whereas this pride and dedication is exemplified through the annual food drive conducted by the National Association of Letter Carriers, and whereas the annual food drive is devoted to supporting the needs of the families of Auburn. And now therefore we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, commend and congratulate the National Association of Letter Carriers on their May 14, 2016, annual food drive day in Auburn, and it's signed by Kenneth Holstrom, Chairman, Doreen Goodrich, Vice Chairman, Stephen Simontian, Denise Brotherton, and Dan Caffetter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. LaFlash, and good luck. Okay, on the next item, we have communications from Senator Michael Moore, and this is in regard to the notice that we had received. Well, he hadn't stopped in to see us back on Monday, April 25, and this is regarding the matter of moving the Liberty Bell in the State House, and it's being looked at, looked into, and there's been some discussion with several people, and nothing has come forward yet, so he will keep us advised of what other information comes forward. Have you got any questions or comments? Okay, being none, we'll move along. Okay, the next, we have the Selectmen General Items, seasonal opening license on town property for Boy Scout Troop 121, the Bottle and Can Drive at the Auburn Fire Station on July 9, 2016. And is there anybody here from the Scouts?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to come up and join us at the table, please? If you could identify yourself and tell us a little bit about what your plans are.
Yes, I'm Michael Valley. I'm the chairman for Troop 121 here in Auburn. We're chartered by North American Martyrs. It's an annual can drive that we do. It's our biggest fundraiser, and the funds help us with...help defer costs for trips, summer camp, uniforms, and awards for the boys.
And this is going to be on July 9, and it's gonna be at the Auburn Fire Headquarters at Drury Square from 9 o'clock till 1 o'clock in the afternoon.
Yes. Yep, and it's actually adjacent to the headquarters.
Adjacent to the headquarters, yes. Is there any questions, comments?
No.
Well, being none, I'll entertain a motion. Mrs. Brotherdin.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the license, provided that all the applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions shall be fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and I hope that the sun shines that day. I'll second that motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Is there a motion on to vote to waive the fee? Mrs. Brotherdin.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we waive the fee in accordance with our board's policy.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in tonight. Now we have in front of us a Drain Layer's License for Alexander Construction Incorporated of Worcester, and you have in your packets the documents for that, and this is previously licensed, so this is our short form for the application. Is there any questions, comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions shall be fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Okay, the motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Now, we have some...a gift acceptance here in front of us tonight. Let's see. It's from the company, or the store Foot Locker, and its amount of $100 to the fire department gift account.
Motion to accept with gratitude, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A big pardon?
It was the same one.
Okay, so the motion been made. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay, we have no proclamations in front of us tonight. Now, we have a request from the town clerk for a board vote for the Mass General Law Chapter 54, to discontinue the use of the AccuVote voting machines and to use the LHS Imagecast voting machines. And can we have the town clerk come up? Mrs. Grema, would you like to come up and join us here at the table? Maybe you can give us a little bit of background on what the plan is for this tonight. You've got some new machines coming?
Well, I have to get a vote to discontinue what we're using now, which will be, the last time we're using those will be next week's election, May 17, and then going forth, starting with the September primary, we'll be using the new machines. And until I get a vote from the board of selectmen to discontinue machines and the start of new machines, I can't...
Okay, is there a reason for the vote to have those...
I have to have a vote, and I have to have it certified to the Secretary of State's office within five days.
Okay.
So, once I get a vote, then I send it to them this week.
Okay, and so the last time these older machines are gonna be used will be next Tuesday's election, and then they will be discarded if we take action on that tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
They're not gonna be thrown away. They'll be recycled to...
Okay, I understand. Is there any comments, questions? Okay, being none, I'll entertain a motion. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 34, we vote to continue the AccuVote voting machines for all elections with the annual town meeting election...I'm sorry, annual town election, May 17, 2016, being the last day being used, and to use the LHS Imagecast voting machines for all elections starting at the September state primary election. at the September state primary election on September 8th, 2016.
Okay. Motion made, is there a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Ms. Greymo.
Thank you.
Now, under the town manager items, we have vote to transfer a deed on parcel behind number 4 Meadow Street. I will turn this over to Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the chair. This item relates to a very small, almost triangular shaped parcel that is landlocked. It is not buildable. The current assessed value is $400 of the parcel, and you can see from the correspondence that the total amount that was owed to the town over the years through the tax title process, the taking of foreclosure, is $4,671, but the assessed value is $400. So, a couple of things I just want to point out. First of all, the, back in 2004 to 2006, the parcel had been valued at a much higher valuation. And in 2004, it was $10,400, and in 2006, it was $14,500. So, when the foreclosure proceedings took place shortly thereafter, it was based on, I'll call it an inflated value from that period of time. Clearly, the valuation was looked at by the assessor and readjusted shortly thereafter, at some point thereafter in the future, to reflect $400, which is based on the fact that it is landlocked and it is not a buildable parcel. It could be a great accessory use for one of the abutters, but not a buildable parcel. So, the town of Auburn, again, we are looking to dispose of property that we've taken by tax title and foreclosure where appropriate, and this is a lot that has no use to the town for anything. We looked at it from the DPW police perspective, there's no need to use this parcel. We had two options. We will shortly be going out and auctioning 6 Meadow Street, which is owned by the town. But in the interim, we had looked at potentially attaching this parcel of land to 6 Meadow and to get it back on the tax rolls, to get it off of the town's books and put it onto the private use. But before we did that, we wanted to reach out to the abutters, of which there are three. So, you can see here that we did send a letter to all three abutters explaining the current assessed value and telling them what the tax title value was that was owed to the town at the time it was closed. If the town does not sell this, the town has to write this off as a loss. Even if we attach it to 6 Meadow Street, it would go on the books as being a loss. By going out to the abutters and asking for interest and asking for a bid or an offer on it, we're able to collect some money that we're currently not able to collect. And we did, as you can see, we did receive an offer from the resident at 4 Meadow Street. We did not receive any other offer, that's the only one. If you look at a map from a geographic standpoint, from a linear standpoint too, from a planning board standpoint, it makes sense to attach this parcel to 4 Meadow. It makes the parcel a normal shape as opposed to in a regular shape that we may have had if we attached it to our own sale of 6 Meadow. So, we are recommending that we move forward and sell this piece of land. We are allowed to do so. We have the required town meeting votes through, I believe it's Article 7. The last couple of years it's been 6, so this year probably would have voted bump to 7, which is a standard article at every annual town meeting, allowing the Board of Selectmen to execute deeds for properties. Under the charter and under Mass. General Law, town manager has the ability to negotiate a deal, but the Board of Selectmen is the one that actually executes the deed, executes and transfers the deed. So, we are asking for your support in this. We think it's a good decision, and we'll put it back to someone for accessory use, and no longer would the town be responsible for it. I would ask in the vote that's before you, just to clarify, it does say a vote to transfer the deed. I think it should be revised to say a vote to execute and transfer the deed. Legally, I'm not sure that we need to do that, but I'd rather cover the language on the vote and just be sure. So, vote to execute and transfer the deed.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we vote to, we vote to execute and transfer the deed on parcel number 56-092-0000 behind 4 Meadow Street to John and Bonnie. And I'm going to butcher the last name, but Mazol.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we have a request to apply for and accept grant funds for planning assistance toward housing, $25,000 for development of housing plan under the Community Compact Program, and Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you. This is a culmination of an update and seeking a vote to go ahead and apply. I did receive a call and spoke with somebody from the state last week regarding our Community Compact, and some of the progress that we're making toward getting the identification of the financial assistance and the technical assistance. And I did hear from the state that we will be receiving grant funds in the amount of $25,000 for an economic development grant, which, that documentation should be coming in shortly. We will turn that around and submit it back to the state. I'll probably put that on the next agenda because I know that's coming in shortly. This, the other part of it was that that would fund the economic development plan, part of it. A lot of the work has to be done by the master plan committee and residents, and, you know, hopefully the board will be involved in it, but the $25,000 will enable us to hire a consultant to help us develop that economic development plan, which is a component of the master plan. The other piece of the Community Compact was a housing plan. And what the Commonwealth has informed us is that there is a grant called the PATH Grant, which is the Planning Assistance Toward Housing Grant, and that is a competitive grant. It is an open round, meaning there's no definitive date for application. But knowing that that is available and we're being encouraged to apply for it, I don't know that we would get it, but the maximum amount that we can apply for is $25,000. So, I wanted to come to the board tonight, knowing that we have any, every intent of moving forward on this. We just found this information out, so we have not yet started on the application. We'll be working to get that done shortly. So, if we could have a vote from the board, allowing us to apply for and accept the grant funds, and then just keep in mind, at the next meeting, I'll have more information on the source of the economic development grant. I didn't have enough detail to put on the agenda for you tonight.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions? I'll entertain a motion. Mrs. Brotherton.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to give permission for our town manager to go forward to apply for and accept the grant funds through the PATH program.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. We're just excited, we want to thank the state. This is a great program. As you know, the Lieutenant Governor came out and signed an agreement with all of you here, and there are three parts to this. We're still working on the educational component as well. It's a long process. The state has over 200 that they're working on, and they are making every effort to get these done as quickly as possible. It does take time, we recognize that. As long as we're moving forward and we know there are funds and technical assistance in place, we'll keep you informed as to what might happen, but we're, we think this is an exciting process. It's a two-year process, so it will take time to complete, but it will be well worth it.
Great. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
There's no tabled items tonight. We have Board of Selectmen member items, and that'll be something I'd put on for discussion on developing board policy for code of ethics and conduct. I know over the course of the past term, we've had some comments and remarks made which were not fitting to debate, discussion on this board, and I feel that I think it's time we should put together a code of ethics and conduct for board members, and especially with the, to orient new people coming to the board, because we will have a new seat filled here, and maybe start some discussion on putting together the ethics and the conduct of the board be fitting to us. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Coppinder.
Well, I do have to be a bit of a nitpick, because technically, we're supposed to have a description of what you want to do, and we didn't get that, so...
Okay, I think in, this was just to put on the board for tonight for discussion, for something we want to do down the road, just for thoughts. So, I don't have any suggestions or anything in front of me, but it's something that we wanted to put on for tonight, and possibly bring up for discussion of future meetings, and maybe bring back some suggestions.
If I could finish my thought, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
My point is, other members have been criticized for bringing, it's a Board of Selectmen item. This board adopted policies that said if Board of Selectmen want a member item, they're supposed to describe it. We don't have that. So, I found it kind of ironic that we're talking about a code of conduct and we're not even following our rules. So, I think first and foremost, I won't support it because I think it's about censoring members as opposed to we need to have conversations. There have been some conversations up here that I've spoken out against, which shouldn't be here, shouldn't be there, but each member, I've always said, because people have come up to me and said, you know, so-and-so said da-da-da-da-da, and why don't you say anything about it? And I, my answer to them is, each of us has been elected by the voters. Same people, whether you voted for me or you don't, you're a resident of the town, I'm here to help you, I'm here to serve you. I'm not here to censor or tell other board members how to think, how to feel, or how to express themselves. Further, we have, we operate under Robert's Rules of Order, and we also have a rather robust state ethics requirement. So, I think we're covered. So, I won't support it because I feel that, you know, we've been a little uneven as to applying the rules. Certain members get away with saying things or doing things, getting motions handed to them ahead of time, you know, and it's just not right. You know, I felt that there have been times where I've been cut off from making comments. People who have been present, some of them sitting chairs of committees have been cut off by the chair because we think that the conversation's going on too long. There are volunteers, maybe they went a little long, I don't know. You know, I'm fairly new to the board, even though I'm two years in, but when they come up, I think it's something important enough that our board members, tonight we had a member of the school committee and housing authority come up, among other committees he serves on, or has served on. So, I think we want to hear from people, and we don't want to censor members. We don't want people to feel as if they can't express themselves. Now, I agree, people should be civil. I know tonight we were told that some, sometimes we're too nice. I don't think civility is necessarily a sign of weakness. In fact, I think it's actually a sign of strength, that we as board members and adults can have a conversation about difficult issues that we come at from very different perspectives. You know, I'm the youngest member of the board, I was the youngest member on the planning board, and people tend to, especially parents, tend to talk to me like they're my folks. I got two great folks, and I'm very appreciative that they give me advice. I'd like to be spoken to as a colleague. We are colleagues, we should be able to police ourselves, we don't need to do this. I think it will open a Pandora's Box, and I'm not ready to lend anybody a key to that box.
Thank you, Mr. Coppinder. Is there any other comments? Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
I mean, you're right, it's on the agenda item is discussion of developing a board policy for code of ethics and conduct. I think that's more applied to the board itself than, than other people. I have no problem with it being put on the tabled items at this point, and if people want to bring in comments, but I think if we were to develop it, it would, should have input from everyone, so I think it should be just kind of left as a tabled item and see if people bring anything forward.
Okay. Was there any other comments? That was my plan tonight, just to bring it forward and just see if there is any interest in doing this. It wasn't, didn't bring anything forward for suggestions on how to, when, and what to do with it. It was just a matter of, we've had some remarks and comments made that were, didn't deem appropriate, and that's why I brought this forward tonight, so that we could, I could ask about it and see if there was any interest. So, if Mrs. Goodrich says we can table it, we can, and if the rest of the board agrees, we will table it, and we'll bring it back in another time if there's any further discussion or ideas on it. So, what I will do is I will make a note that we table this until such time as our next meeting, and if there's any further comment, if any suggestions, we can discuss it at that point, and then possibly either delete it, or we can send along to the subcommittee for discussion. It'll be up to the board to do what they want to do with that. So, we'll put it under tabled items for our next meeting. Okay. Next, public comments, and I guess, yes, Mr. Page.
Excuse me, Mr. Page, 900 Common Road, Auburn. I would just like to agree with Mr. Coppinder's assessment of the new policy that you're thinking about doing. I think it's unnecessary. I think it's censorship by a few people on the Board of Selectmen. I think this town is getting very censored, and the citizens, again, very censored by this board, and, you know, everybody has a right to speak. Just because you don't agree with it, don't mean you can put something in to shut them up. We need to work as a town. And as far as, in my point of view, we have not working, we have not been working for the town. There are some members on this board, in my personal opinion, should be thrown out of town. And I'll tell you right now, that's okay, Ken, I'm all done.
Mr. Page.
I'm all done with that. I got my point across, and they know who they are, but I totally agree with Mr. Coppinder, and I think it's about time this board gets back to thinking about their residents and their taxpayers. Thank you.
Before, is there any other public comment tonight? Before we finish up tonight, I would just like to acknowledge Mr. Simonian's six years of service to the town and say thank you. Has anybody got anything else?
Mr. Chairman. Thank you for doing that. I regret that Steve had a prior commitment and couldn't be with us for the whole meeting, but, you know, something was more important, so I wish him well. I thank him for his service, and I hope he will consider coming back to town service, whether it's on an elected board, as an appointed board. You know, we definitely need volunteers who have experience, as well as brand-new volunteers who want to learn about the process, so I think maybe after some time, he'll hopefully think about coming back to do something for the town. Perhaps less high-profile, I don't know, but at least he'd be serving. You know, we'd get some value out of his experience.
Thank you, Mr. Coppinder. Is there anything else? Mrs. Brotherton.
I too was sorry that Steve had to leave early. As the daughter, the wife, the daughter of the wife, the mother of veterans, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Steve for his years of service for our country and all veterans that are residing in Auburn, and those who are with us and those that have passed, and I wish him the best in future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If there's nothing else, we have minutes in front of us tonight from November 9th, 2015, and November 23rd, 2015. Are there any comments, questions, errors, omissions? Being none, I'll accept them as presented, and then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and to, and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you and good night.